Good evening and welcome to the City Council of San Bruno's special meeting, study session, agenda on the budget. Roll call please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Item number two, public comment. Any members of the public wish to address the council on items on this agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll go right into the conduct study session to review the recommended 2013-14 general funds, special revenue funds, and enterprise funds budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We have what I hope will be an informative and relatively concise presentation for you tonight that is intended simply to provide you with an overview of the work program and the financial information that is contained in this budget. We recognize that you have had a very short period, you've had no time to review the budget prior to this study session, and so as I indicated to you when we set this up, that we will be perhaps making use of the budget document to point and show you certain things that we're talking about, but tonight is, we recognize, is not an opportunity for you to have an informed discussion about the content of this budget. That, we hope, will occur next week at one or more study sessions that we have previously scheduled. So, the presentation tonight, although we have a number of people in the audience from the departments, will not cover detailed information about the departmental budget presentations in the printed document, and again, we're scheduling that information for your consideration next week. What we are talking to tonight about is a relatively higher-level overview of the financial picture, the financial situation of the city in which this budget has been developed, and we have some generally, what we think is relatively positive news on that front, and again, about the, some of the bigger-picture issues both impacting and shaping the work program for the coming year. And I just want to make sure that I don't discourage any discussion that you would like to have tonight. Certainly, as always, we are very interested in hearing from the city council, so please feel free to stop us or to let us know at any point if you would like to entertain a discussion or if you have any questions. So with that, I'm going to get started, and then the presentation tonight will be between myself and our finance director, Kim Duran. The budget overall, and this is a very, very positive comment, and I hope that you will join me in a great deal of appreciation for a situation that we are now experiencing where, for the first time in a very long time, we are presenting to you a balanced budget, not a, we always present you with a balanced budget, a budget that has been balanced without the need for reductions in staff, programs, or services, and which does not rely on any recommended use of one-time funds for balancing this budget. It is largely due to a beginning improvement in our revenue situation, as Kim will give you a little bit more detail about, and although we are not at a point where we would be recommending to you that it is time for massive consideration of new programs or services or expansion of existing services, we do find this to be a very positive result. This budget still reflects the city council's conservative revenue estimating policy and priority, and it continues to reflect the prior year's cost containment strategies. And what I mean by that, and as Kim will detail further, virtually all of the prior year reductions in programs, services, and staff continue and are forming the base budget. So, we recognize that the road we've traveled over the past many years that has resulted in a number of changes to what we would call our base services has changed the level at which we operate, and that is our new base. So, we don't make expansions or changes without bringing those back for specific deliberation by the city council. The budget continues, and largely because of the many prior-year reductions, there continue to be, there continues to be, shall we say, a greater demand for resources than we have resources to provide to what we might all consider to be important and even necessary services and programs. Where we've had the opportunity to make some thoughtful evaluation of opportunities to direct resources to some either unmet needs or undermet needs, we have thoughtfully incorporated those into this budget as proposed supplemental or service enhancement changes, and we'll go through those with you tonight. And then lastly, in terms of the budget overview, before I turn the presentation over to Kim, I wanted to acknowledge and to briefly discuss with the council, and again, from a fairly high-level perspective, the incorporation or recognition of the numbers of items that the city council discussed in a previous budget workshop that we held on March 26th. At that time, staff was presenting to you a number of items that we were, as we were at a fairly early stage in developing the budget, numbers of sort of bigger-picture issues had emerged as items that we wanted to make sure you were aware of, that would be coming forward as part of the budget presentation, both the operating and the capital budget presentations. And that workshop provided an opportunity for the city council to comment on a number of issues of interest and concern. The sheet that you have in front of you is a summary based on our notes from that meeting that identifies, in some cases in a very shorthand kind of way, the several comments that were made by members of the city council, and we've attempted to organize them in a manner that gives us a little bit of structure to how and in what manner these items would be brought back forward. In general, there are a number of these items that fall generally within the, sort of the construct of the operating budget. Some of them are incorporated, and we'll spend a little bit more time with you over the course of the next few evenings as we're going through the operating budget presentation. Some of these items have already been incorporated either as a work program item in a base budget expenditure line item, or as a new supplemental enhancement item. And then there are a number of items which we will be bringing forward to you in this next category under the capital budget, the capital improvement program budget, that we anticipate incorporating and/or discussing further with the city council at that time. The capital improvement program budget is currently under development, and we anticipate bringing that forward to you next month for your separate detailed consideration. There were a few items that we would like to bring back to the city council for a more thorough discussion to make sure that we understand exactly how the city council would like to proceed and to have a little bit more back and forth. And then lastly, there was sort of a subset of these items that really represent areas where the city council asked for a compilation of information, and these items are in progress, but not yet, they don't, they're not really precisely information that we would ordinarily be including in the budget, but we wanted to make sure that we were acknowledging and recognizing that the city council had asked for certain information to be compiled, and we will be providing that to you. We're certainly interested as part of your conversation tonight and going forward over these next budget study sessions, certainly interested in getting any further refinement and clarification of the city council's interests in those items.
When did you want those coming?
Anytime you would like to provide them. If you have some comments right now, we're happy to receive them.
No, I mean, I can wait until you.
Okay. So, let me just be a little bit more clear. Our intent is particularly for those items that are listed under the operating budget and/or the capital budget to, that's sort of our thinking about, under what umbrella would those conversations be most useful? So, for example, under the operating budget, what I will anticipate is that there are a number of these items that we'll be discussing with you as we move through some of the departmental presentations. For example, we have a supplemental proposal for a allocation of funds to a economic development downtown, the planning resource that would assist us in developing some means of attracting new businesses to the downtown and working specifically to revitalize that special corridor of our city. So, we have some of those types of items to discuss with you. Some of these other items, specifically where I've tried to capture them under the council's interest for a strategic planning session, we'd like to propose that to you, work towards getting that scheduled, and I would envision numbers of these issues either coming up as part of your discussion, say, of code enforcement as we go through the departmental budgets, or to be fleshed out a little bit as part of a strategic planning discussion. Again, your choice. With this level of information, some of these things, I think, actually need a little bit more discussion. What exactly do you mean by improved code enforcement? You'll hear from us, what are we talking about in terms of the work program that we've envisioned for you as part of the operating budget. You may have some additional or different guidance to provide to us, and so that's how I envision that moving forward. Does that help?
Yeah, I could just, there's only one thing that, and I don't know whether it would be under the capital improvement or not.
Tell us right now.
And that's what I brought up before as far as reviewing safety, as far as the equipment. I'm not talking more or less about the apparatus, but that we, since we have some monies in the equipment reserve, and rather than allocating them back to the general fund, that we look at every department across the board, and if there are items that are outdated or need to be reviewed or to bring up to par, that those be brought forward as well. I know it might be bigger in some areas than others, but at least we can see about this budget, and maybe then looking further if it has to be a capital improvement.
Thank you. Okay, so that may be a good example of how your thoughts didn't exactly fall into the capital budget. Let me just tell you, so thank you for that clarification. The departments are generally tasked each year, budget limitations or not, with looking at the essential equipment that is necessary for their operations. So, it is our, it is generally our practice to evaluate and where important and where, when resources are limited, where absolutely critical, to bring forward budget proposals to replace equipment. I think that we can deal with some of those issues as we move through the departmental presentations, and perhaps departments can be a little bit more clear about what they've looked at, where they think equipment needs may be, may need to be considered a little bit further, and certainly we're happy to take any further guidance from the city council. I will move on unless the council would like to, if there's any additional comments.
Well, later.
On both ends.
Well, you know, had to have a little drama.
My God.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. At least it wasn't something.
Go ahead, talk.
Okay. Thank you. Considering our conversation last week, I guess it was, with Caltrans and the fountain, proposed fountain at the station, and the discussions about who's going to own the maintenance of it, would that be appropriate to look at the operating budget as a possible future operating budget item, or? Absolutely. Okay, so that's. And actually, that's a very good, a good catch. That is a great example of something that has come up very recently. Budget was already prepared, at least in large measure. We don't still have a really good idea about what the cost is, and we could plug in a number, but we actually haven't done that, and so that is something that we will need to consider, and that that item is coming forward, or at least the Posey Park discussion item is coming back to you on Tuesday night as part of the regular council meeting. So at that time, it would be a great opportunity to say, and, you know, we recognize that there may be a need to amend the resources that are available in the budget, depending on what it is that we decide to do about Posey Park. Okay. Great, thank you.
And if I could just touch on, I think it's important, we dealt with it, we dealt with it when we were dealing with the, developing the median strips, and we brought staff in to get their input as to, you know, how they're going to deal with, you know, the new median strips and maintenance and things, and I think it's important to include staff in some of these sessions, these study sessions or discussions, because they're the ones that ultimately are going to be dealing with.
I can tell you, they're very aware and very, very much interested in new service demands, because in fact, they are the experts. They know exactly, now, we don't know a lot about maintaining fountains and big rivers, such as proposed for Posey Park, but we are working on that, and the park staff in particular has been tasked with developing not only an understanding of what's proposed, but to give us their best estimate or judgment about what it actually is going to be required in order to maintain that, just as we are also considering with respect to the newly renovated, increasingly, increasing number of newly renovated medians. It's an issue, and I know the staff is here tonight, they'll be prepared to discuss that with you.
But I mean, even what Rico was talking about as far as equipment, I mean, I'd like to think that our staff knows what they need and what's new and improved, what's the latest state-of-the-art stuff, but I think we need to really be sure that they know what they're looking, and that we are getting the best, and that they know what they're getting. There are a few isolated cases where we think that we've made the wrong decisions on certain things, you know, so I think we need to be sure, because we're talking about a lot of money for certain types of equipment, certain repairs on facilities and things that I think we should really know, maybe not the council, but know that the process is going in the right direction and making those decisions.
You want to know that the people who have frontline understanding and are impacted by the operation of the equipment, that they use the equipment, that they've been involved in selecting and guiding the decision-making regarding those choices.
And we're just not sold a bill of goods for some guy that came, that called it.
To the chair, recap what, add-on to Ken, I think it is most critical, because we might sit up here and think that we've been adequately funding something, and all of a sudden, I want to ensure and make sure, as being a former city employee, who was the one that was on the front lines, at least in my department, not public safety, but that we're being heard, they're being heard, and that if there is a need, or something is outdated, or something is not safe, that we're aware of that, and to come to this level, and that we get their feedback, their input, they should never be afraid to bring forward the needs that provide the best service and protection for them and the residents. And so that is one thing I want to make sure this budget cycle.
Thank you. I will move on to the next topic, and again, we're always interested. No, thank you. As we do every year, we try and give the council a little bit of a report about the year that's just been closed. We give you a quarterly financial report, and the budget is an opportunity, the budget presentation each year in June is an opportunity to give you the fourth quarter financial report. We do that, and Kim will be summarizing some of the financial details tonight, both as it relates to the just-ended or about to, almost about-to-be-ended fiscal year, where we project our ending position as of June 30th, but also what is the, what's the financial situation look like going into the next fiscal year, 13, 14. It's also an opportunity to reflect a little bit, look back, and say two things. Number one, did we do what we said we were going to do, and if not, where are we with respect to the things that the city council asked for and/or approved? And secondly, what are some of the bigger-picture, most significant things that really have a big deal impact on where we are and where we're going? We've selected a very, very small number of items that we think have a big-picture impact, looking forward, as well as sort of the, what did we do last year? How have we situated the city in a better spot than it was when we started the year? And these were some of the things that we came up with in terms of, you know, how we've moved the ball forward, what are some of the significant accomplishments. Now, I call these to your attention only because they fit on one slide and they're sort of bigger picture, but I'd like to call your attention to the departmental presentations in the budget. As you have the opportunity over the next several days to go through the budget in a little bit more detail, I hope that you will spend a little bit of time and pause and look at each department's presentation, not only of its proposed goals and objectives for the coming year's work program, but also how we've presented this year, the accomplishments for the about-to-be-closed fiscal year, the current fiscal year, in response to some comments that have been made in prior years by the city council, and frankly, out of our own interest to make sure that we're being thoughtful and appropriate in understanding that when you say you're going to do something and that the work program is an important one, that we're actually paying attention to, how did, what, how did we do? Or at least, and I don't mean what was, what was the result as much about, did we move the ball forward in the areas that we spoke about? So you'll see in this budget, and I would call out, although there are many people who worked on this budget, and I am extremely appreciative of the work of every single employee in this organization, and especially the leadership of each of our departments and our finance director in putting together this budget, would call to your attention the fact that Jennifer Dianos, for the first time, had a very significant role in shaping the appearance of this budget, in that she led the effort to provide a status report that is incorporated in each department next to all of those accomplishments. So if we said we were going to do X, where are we with it? And a little statement of what we did, if it's not done, you know, where are we, and is this an item that is part of our continuing work program, or is this something that we've essentially closed and completed accomplishment of? So I hope you'll take a little bit of time and have a chance to look those over in more detail. Just from a bigger-picture perspective, again, some of the things that we think are particularly meaningful in terms of positioning the city for the future, first and foremost, the adoption of the transit corridors plan, which is a years-long initiative to develop that plan to generate the community interest and enthusiasm, and we hope over the next period of time, hopefully beginning as early as the coming year, to really begin a number of strategic initiatives to put that plan fully into place and begin to see sprouts of real revitalization in our downtown and our transit corridors over the next several years. We selected a developer for the community's long-held dream of a high-quality hotel at the Crossing Development Site, one which hopefully will address a long, unmet community need for high-quality meeting and gathering space that will allow us to compare to, most of our colleagues, to have a real place where you can actually have a party, banquet, seminar, something in addition to and other than our wonderful senior center, which gets such heavy use that a community of our size really deserves a little bit, a little bit more than that. And then in the financial area, we just call out again the very significant work by Kim Duran, our finance director, in leading the refinancing of the PERS side fund for public safety, which results over 30, over the next 30 years, with by refinancing the debt that has been on our books and has been being paid to PERS, we've achieved savings of just over $3 million for the taxpayers of San Bruno over the next, as I said, 30 years. So we're pleased about that. And then lastly, the city council, as part of its ongoing interest and priority for assuring the long-term fiscal viability of this community against any and all potential unexpected contingencies, some of which we've actually experienced, developed, you developed, you tasked us with developing, and you approved, a financial reserve policy that has allowed us to more thoughtfully set aside resources as they become available into designated funds that will allow us to be confident that rainy day resources or unforeseen contingency resources are available when they need to be. I'm going to turn it over to Kim now and let her walk through the financials, starting with the big-picture overview of the proposed budget, and walking you through some of the details of the revenues and expenditures we anticipated.
Great, thank you. So the 2013-14 proposed budget anticipates total operating revenues of $34.6 million, and at this time, the proposed operating expenditures of $34.3 million, which leaves an operating surplus of just over $300,000. We'll get into, a little bit later on in the presentation, a, there's a summary in the introduction of the budget of all the supplemental proposed service level enhancements, which total $302,000. So when you factor in those proposed supplemental requests, we end up with a change in fund balance of just over $1,900 next year. So first, starting with the revenue side, everything that you see here, the numbers before you are positive. We are anticipating in 2013-14 that the proposed budget will be 1.3, revenue budget will be $1.3 million higher than the current year amended budget as it currently stands. Now, as you look at those numbers up there, you'll see the middle, sort of in the middle column, the second column, the estimated actual for the current year, and you'll see that numbers are trending higher than what the amended budget indicates at this point in time, and so the budget projection for next year is pretty much consistent with what we are anticipating for the current year. Where we're seeing most of our increases, as I've said in the past during some of the quarterly financial updates, are within the taxes, and we are seeing jumps in sales tax and transient occupancy. and transient occupancy tax. And so we are seeing pretty significant increases in those revenues. And I'd like to move to the next slide, which hopefully is not as quite as simple to see as I was hoping, but what this does is it provides some perspective over the last seven years, from 2006, 2007 to current and to the proposed budget for next year, of our major revenue categories, so taxes, and then we have franchise fees, use of money and property allocations, and departmental revenues. Those are our five major general fund revenue categories, and that top line are taxes. And you can see that in looking at this, that our taxes going back around '07, '08, '09 had reached a high of just over $20 million. And then when the recession really impacted the city during the 2008, '09, '09, '10 fiscal year, those revenues dropped off significantly. And they stayed low for the next several years, and it wasn't until really within the last year that we've seen taxes as a whole basically catch up to where we were back in '07, '08, '09, and now surpass that level. So the tax growth is positive, but it also, it's good to kind of look at it from a historical perspective to see really where we ended up, where we were just a few years ago. As you look down towards the bottom of the graph, where the other revenue categories are, what you'll see is a somewhat different story than what you're seeing with taxes, in that many of the other revenue categories remain fairly stagnant. We have seen, you know, some upticks from year to year in certain categories, but for the most part, as you look from 2006, 2007 to next year, you see that those lines are pretty flat for the most part. And in some cases, we've seen decreases. Again, the allocations and other revenue category included some recoveries that we formerly, we used to receive from the former redevelopment agency. Those are gone. We used to receive an interest payment from the redevelopment agency on those outstanding advances. That is no longer coming into the city. So while we're seeing these increases, you know, keep in mind that there are other categories where we are still, there are still some lows, low points. In addition, in addition to those that I mentioned, interest earnings, as you know, remain at historic lows. So those are just some categories that we continue to see very little growth in. One other thing I'd like to bring to your attention on the revenue side is the fact that the proposed 2013-14 budget does not include any what we would call one-time revenues. We have, in the past, from time to time, utilized some one-time revenues to balance the budget. For 2013-14, the use of one-time revenues, and when I say one-time revenues, usually those are revenues that come from major development projects, and some major development projects that we have taken into consideration for next year include some of the home rebuilds at, up at Cressmar, the Skycrest, as well as the San Francisco Police Credit Union project. So those are some somewhat significant one-time revenues that may be anticipated for next year. However, those are not factored into the proposed budget at this time, and will instead be brought forward as part of the capital improvement program budget as a potential funding source for some, maybe some of the one-time initiatives that will come forward with that budget. Moving on to the expenditure side, the total proposed 2013-14 budget is $34.3 million, as I mentioned earlier. This is a $900,000 increase over the current year amended budget, and that's about a 2.7% increase. That does not, $900,000 does not include the budget amendment that you might recall from mid-year. This year, we amended the budget for approximately $1 million this year to increase the budget as a result of the negotiated agreements, the elimination of the furlough and some of the other concession, employee concessions, and some of the salary and benefit increases that came as part of those agreements are already factored into the current year amended budget of $33.4 million. Moving on to the next slide, so that $900,000 increase, it's a significant increase, and what I, the next slide tries to do is really demonstrate some of the major drivers of that increase, and this isn't meant, this is just a summary of some of the more significant items. This isn't meant to be everything, obviously, that's increased in the budget, but some of the more significant ones. One item is the cost for the November 2013 election of $54,000. We have some increase, increases in county service charges or animal control cost contract increase, as well as some additional increases of just about $45,000. We have an increase in the fire overtime budget, as well as the shared, some of the costs related to the shared services agreement with fire, for a total of $264,000 of increases, which are offset by revenue coming into the city as a result of those agreements of $106,000. Every year, as part of the budget process, we have to take into account wage increases that employees receive as a result of just step increases, and those typically amount to anywhere in the $1,000 to $200,000 range. And so for next year, that amount is $200,000. We also have increases in purse costs of, for our miscellaneous group of about $95,000. We had a program expansion, expansion of some classes and camps and so forth in the recreation department that results in an increase in part-time salaries, as well as contract, contractor fees of about $162,000, which are offset by revenues of about $200,000. And the final item is a increase in the city's liability premium. We, I've mentioned before that the city liability premium over the last two years has increased at a rate of 30% per year, and it is anticipated to increase another 30% next year. This increase is significant, and it's, it is paid for the, that, the liability premium is paid for through an allocation to all departments depending on, you know, the responsibility for that premium. And so the general funds portion of that increase is $70,000 for next year. So in total, I get you just below that $900,000 increase figure, and then if you offset it with $306,000 of revenues, you end up with just over 500, just about $584,000 of increase in the budget. This next slide is really just meant to sort of be thought-provoking and informational in that, one of the things that I was looking at as we were looking at the increase in the budget and trying to reconcile the $900,000 increase and better understand that is really looking at, you know, again, going back historically, looking at where we were back in 2006, 2007. And as part of any financial forecast, you typically would take a base budget and apply some sort of inflation factor. Many of the forecasts that I've seen use an inflation factor of 3% to 4% annually. And so what we did was just took a conservative approach and said, what if we took the budget in '06, '07, and had just increased it at a rate of 2% per year? Where would we be for next year? And as you can see, that number is just, just under $36 million for the proposed 2013-14 budget, using that 2% escalation.
Can I interrupt you for a second, Kim? I saw an earlier version, and I think at 3% or 2.5%, those 200, 2007, '08, '09 bars, the diagonal line actually is much closer to the top of those. So the chart is just a little bit misleading in making it look like, '07, '08, '09, you know, we were way, I guess you could, one interpretation could be way over spending. Remember, that's only a 2% annual escalation, just using 3% or 2.5%?
That was 2.5.
2.5% puts that diagonal line much closer to the top of those bars. So it really is not, you know, there's not a, this is just for purposes of illustration of the point that Kim was making, that even a 2% escalation in costs is really, we've been very, very conservative in our annual budget, budget total amounts over the last many years.
And I think what makes the prior, the previous slide even more interesting is when you look at the purse rates, which are on this next chart, and because a major driver of our budget increases over the last seven, eight years have been increases in purse rates. And as you can see, the white line representing, the bottom line representing the miscellaneous employees, and the top line representing the safety employees, and you can see that, you know, over the course of the last six, seven years, fairly significant increases in both miscellaneous and safety rates. The drop-off that you see in basically the current year is the result of a reduction in the rate resulting from the issuance of the pension obligation bonds. And it is misleading to the extent that we are now paying a debt service payment that is equivalent to the amount that we would essentially have been paying if we are paying the full rate. So over time, we are saving money. However, it's misleading to look at that dramatic of a drop-off, because it is not, in fact, the city's not saving that much money as a result of those increases, those bonds. But with this, oh, since 2006, 2007, back in '06, '07, the city was paying just about $3.2 million in pension costs, and the budget for next year is about $5 million when you include those pension obligation bonds. So over the last six years, the general fund's contribution to pension costs has been 1.8 million. So when you think, hear that number, and you look back to the previous slide at some of the budget increases and decreases, but where we ended up, I think it's pretty tremendous, it's a tremendous accomplishment that the budget has been able to, have been contained in the manner which it has been as a result of those increases. In addition to purse increases, there's also healthcare costs. We've increased those over the last seven, eight, six, seven years by about $1 million as well. So some very significant increases that have been absorbed through these budgets over the years. And I just want to bring to your attention, before we move on from this slide, to the future projected purse rates and that continuing increase that you see up there. You might have heard recently, within the last three to six months, purse has talked a lot about changing the way they amortize their rates, their amortization schedule, because essentially they realize that they weren't collecting enough money to pay for their liability. And so when they change their assumptions, that results in higher rates for all of us to pay, all the cities to pay. And so based on the information that purse has provided to us, we anticipate that these increases that are up here are accurate based on what we know at this point in time. And by 2020, based on the information that we have, miscellaneous purse rates will be just below 30%. So very significant increases still to come. However, you know, they are on par with what we've seen in the past. And so I think what we've seen is an ability to continue to budget in a way that contains those costs as much as possible. So that concludes my portion of the finances, and I'll hand it back over to the city manager to discuss the proposed service level enhancements.
Great, thank you, Kim. On page A1, under the first tab in your budget, there is a summary, just following the city manager's introductory letter to the budget, that outlines all of the several proposed service level enhancements that are brought forward for your consideration. We will be discussing each of these in a little bit more detail during the departmental presentations, but we wanted to call your attention to the fact that these proposals are being made. And again, this is very typical of what we have been doing in the last several years, is to continually look at our organization budget from a base level that does not assume any significant changes or increases, but continues all existing programs and services and does its very best to incorporate and even just simply absorb cost increases within the same general cost parameters. The proposed service level enhancements then again are called out for your special decision-making and have not yet been included in the numbers that you see in each of the departments. So again, we will be asking for you to make specific decisions about these when we bring the budget back at the end of this month for your consideration to adopt. I just want to point out a couple of things. I mentioned earlier the concept of a resource to provide an economic development plan and initiatives for the downtown, and where is this coming from and why? As the council notes, in January of 2012, the city and others in the state of California experienced a pretty significant loss of the tools that redevelopment provide, provided for economic revitalization and elimination of blight. This city had just begun and was just on the cusp of taking real advantage of redevelopment as a tool and a resource, and we've just begun to develop a significant redevelopment tax increment flow. What some of our colleagues are doing, and similarly, we're proposing that you consider, that we use some of the property tax increase that the city will experience this year as a result of the loss of redevelopment, that as one of the taxing entities in this jurisdiction, the city of San Bruno itself, is going to experience a limited increase in its property tax receipts. We are proposing that you consider set aside, in this case of $125,000, for specific dedication to initiatives and strategic planning for the downtown. Now, obviously, our transit corridors plan addresses the downtown. It does so in a larger-scale, kind of longer-term, bigger-picture, development standards type of way. This resource would be intended for nearer-term initiatives and the opportunity to try and, try and jumpstart revitalization of the downtown in, hopefully in a number of different ways. We, this service level enhancements proposed here in the total cost of $302,000 also includes some fairly limited reorganizations or changes in the way that different departments are staffed. You'll notice in the chart that you have before you in the budget, that where we've kind of rejuggled the staff, resources, and allocations, we've also shown where reductions or where cost savings would occur. So the $302,000 is a net total cost of the supplemental program. We are proposing some limited new staff or restored staff in areas where we think it is particularly critical, and I'll call those out right now. First, using resources that are available to the city for all of the various issues and work efforts associated with the rebuilding, restoration, and recovery of the community related to the fire incident in 2010. That trust fund is being requested to fund a management analyst position that would be utilized primarily through the city manager's office and in coordination with other key department heads in the administrative section of the organization to address primarily public information and outreach needs, but to support overall the continuous commitment, continuing tremendously impactful work effort associated with supporting our residents and managing the many initiatives that are, we have taken on and responsibilities that we've been, that we've been required to take on as a result of that incident. In the police department, we are proposing, and this is probably by no means the only area of the organization where a prior cut has had a particular impact, but it's one that I think in our review of the budget initiatives, really has a cross-organization and a community-wide real need that made it rise to the top in terms of what we felt we needed to recommend to you. And that is restoration of one police officer position that was previously filled by a police corporal, whose job responsibilities were uniquely devoted to community service initiatives and support to, again, across the organization, to things like code enforcement, downtown issues, and others that were creating community concerns. The city council, and it just is one example, the city council is The city council, and it just is one example, the city council is acutely aware of a recent issue in our downtown that caused a number of complaints from merchants and residents alike, where, in this case, suspected potentially illegal activity was occurring in one of our downtown businesses, but more particularly that there was numbers of incidents occurring outside of the, outside of the business and, and as I said, creating cause for concern among patrons to the downtown as well as to downtown merchants. The, our ability to address those, and we have successfully, fortunately, addressed that particular issue, but it's, it is by no means an isolated incident. Our ability to address those kinds of critical situations while we are continuing to deal with the broad range of issues and events that are occurring, occurring within the community, it makes, it provides a more spotty type of enforcement and sometimes can lead to dissatisfaction or a delayed response to items that really do deserve more attention. The city council is also aware that we've had a number of particularly critical code enforcement issues that require, again, a cross-departmental, entire organization type of response, and which then have impacts that continue after the immediate intervention and/or need our attention in some other manner. Again, the support services or community services corporal was a position that allowed us to jump on those things a little bit more vigorously and timely. We are recommending to you tonight, and you'll hear more about this when the chief presents the department's, the police department's budget next week, we're recommending that to your consideration as well. The, in the planning area, in the community development department, there are a couple of initiatives that we felt needed your attention. They're both, one of them is the need to complete our zoning ordinance and to move forward with the funding, the opportunity to complete that with environmental review that is required. I recently learned that the funds that we had appropriated and had planned for the use of the, to develop the zoning ordinance update to bring the zoning ordinance in conformance with our new general plan, that that budget allocation had not properly anticipated the need to do environmental review. The, in the housing area, and unfortunately, this is, this is an item that might have previously been funded by redevelopment, the new court decisions have created a need if this community, as I believe it is the city council's interest, continues to, wishes to continue enforcing its ordinance, that requires a pretty significant set aside of any multifamily projects for affordable, multifamily housing projects to be developed for occupancy by low-income households. Our ability to continue doing that will require a study that allows us to demonstrate the need and to become in compliance with new state law that is kind of a push-pull situation. On the one hand, there's state law that makes it more difficult to require affordable housing production. On the other hand, as you know, you're tasked with developing affordable housing, with or without redevelopment. So, we think that's an area that needs a little bit more attention. I'll let you review the other items in here in detail. I think those are really the high points. And as I indicated, each of the departments is tasked with giving you a brief overview during their departmental presentations about each of these supplemental or service enhancement requests. All told, these only amount to a total of $200,000, just over $200,000 in ongoing costs, and just under $100,000 of one-time costs. Next, I just wanted to remind the city council, I mentioned this earlier, that your previous policy position, having to do with the development of reserve funds, is continuing to be maintained. And as we move forward in closing out this fiscal year, once the fourth quarter of the fiscal year is actually completed and the books are finally closed, we'll be in a position to revisit that reserve policy with you and to consider whether there is an opportunity to move further forward with your reserve policy interests and/or to move any of the existing reserves further towards their maximum funding objectives. In terms of the bigger pictures sort of considerations that shaped this budget and that we would like to call to your attention in terms of the, you know, where we're going to be over the next year, or things that we need to keep our eyes on, the city council, I'm sure, is aware that the agreements that we negotiated with each of our six bargaining units over the past year eliminated the furlough, as Kim mentioned, as of July 1st of this year of 2013, I'm sorry, of 2012, and that those changes to salary and benefits that were removed concessions made in prior years are fully incorporated into the budget. What is not yet incorporated into the budget is the fact that those agreements also include a re-opener to occur in October of the coming, this coming fall, in October, with any changes that might be negotiated through the salary and healthcare re-opener to take, to take effect not later than January 1st of 2014. What that means is that for six months of the coming fiscal year, it is possible, although not yet determined, it is possible that the re-opener could resolve in some new costs. Those costs are not yet anticipated, and they have not yet been included in this budget. So, as we move forward into October and begin to get our arms around what, what those costs might look like, obviously, there will be substantial further discussion with the city council, both about what those topic areas of discussion are, what the potential costs of those might be, and what we can recommend to you as a funding plan to cover those costs, if any. During the coming year, we will continue, as we have over the past couple of years, to carefully monitor and account for costs associated with the broad range of activities that the city is continuing to devote to full restoration and recovery following the 2010 disaster in the Crestmore neighborhood. As the council obviously is aware, a $50 million trust fund has been established, and we are periodically assembling the costs that we're incurring and seeking reimbursement from that trust fund. Over the course of the, of the last couple of years, there's been a pretty substantial utilization of existing staff, budgeted staff time for people like myself, finance director, and many of the people in the audience and elsewhere within the organization. On a regular daily basis, there are numbers of different types of activities that we are tasked with performing that relate directly to and would not otherwise be required, except for the fact that a tragic disaster occurred in this town in September of 2010. Our costs are budgeted, and they're fully covered either through our enterprise or our operating budget allocations. So, the recovery of those amounts represents a, an amount of money that then comes back to the city for redeposit, either in the enterprises or in the, in the general fund. But it does give you an opportunity to consider a resource that may be available to be deployed, for example, and it may be our recommendation to you that you want to consider using some of those funds to cover the costs of, if any, of a, of the re-opener that will occur in October. I mention this only because the, number one, I want to make sure that the council and the community are aware that those substantial efforts that are continuing to be expended are actually being paid with a dedicated resource. And secondly, that it gives us the opportunity, not only to recover the costs, but to determine how those funds need to be deployed. I mentioned the significance of the loss of redevelopment previously. I'll just mention this bullet point on the slide I failed to mention earlier when I was talking about the economic development initiative that we're proposing for the downtown as part of our service enhancement recommendations to you, that the, these amounts that the city receives in additional property tax are referred to as redevelopment boomerang funds. I mean, they kind of, they would have bounced to redevelopment, but in fact, they're bouncing back to the taxing entities. I guess that's how we came up with boomerang. For the city of San Bruno, that amount is approximately $750,000 in the 13, 14 fiscal year. Again, we're recommending $125,000 be carved out for the downtown initiative. The remainder of those funds are incorporated in the revenue projection that is, that is being used to fund, general fund expenditures. So, the property taxes, part of the property tax increase results from, based on crisis. But given our stabilizing financial situation, it's an opportunity for us to more thoughtfully and strategically look forward and to develop a multi-year financial plan that gives you a little bit of a, an opportunity to, to think ahead about where we're going and how financially and operationally we propose to get there. Concurrent with that, and, and again, going back to an early, some early comments I made in the, at the start of this meeting regarding the council's discussion of numbers of interest at our previous workshop in March, the council had specifically asked for the establishment of a strategic planning session, and we look forward to working together with you in conjunction with putting together this financial forecast, financial plan, to think about some of the strategic initiatives and planning from a, not just from a financial perspective, but from an operational perspective. Again, where do you want to go, and how are we going to get there? So, we look forward, within the next several months, to scheduling that with the city council and having a more broad-based discussion that then will give us a jumpstart on the development of the following year's budget and work program. So, with that, we're going to move away now, unless the city council would like to engage a little discussion from the operating budget and move to a brief overview discussion of the enterprises' financial issues. And then, that will conclude our discussion tonight, or our presentation tonight, and we'll look forward to getting back with a little bit more detail next week. So, I'm happy to take any questions, if you have any, right now on the operating budget, or we'll move over to the enterprises.
So, moving on to the enterprise funds, I'm just going to very quickly walk through the figures that are up on the screen with the water fund. And I guess one note before we jump into this on the enterprise funds, this is presenting, obviously, the operating side of the budget, and as you're well aware, that with the enterprise funds, particularly with water and wastewater, a significant part of the revenue generation is geared towards the capital program. And so, what you see when you look up at the water and wastewater fund are some sizable surpluses after you take, take out the operating costs, and that is, as intended, to cover the cost of the capital improvement program. So, the financial picture for the enterprises becomes more clear as the, when the capital improvement budget is presented. So, for the operations, water, overall revenues are expected to increase in accordance with the rate program adopted last year of just about $1 million, higher next year than in the current year budget, up to $12.2 million. Whereas on the expenditure side, for operating expenditures, we are anticipating that expenditures are going to be fairly flat, with only a $22,000 increase in the water fund. And part of that is driven by a decrease in the rates, SFPUC rates for next year, below what we anticipated. However, we are anticipating to offset that decrease, an increase in the amount purchased as we continue to have a well down, so there's been an offset there, but overall, a stable budget for water. On the wastewater side, similarly with the revenues, the rate increase program adopted last year anticipates a 10.3% rate increase, and that resulted in a $1.2 million increase in revenues. And on the expenditure side, a fairly stable budget, but some increase of 200, just over $200,000 on the revenue side. And again, the residual difference of $5 million will be geared towards the capital improvement program. The remaining two enterprise funds, storm water, pretty much status quo budget, the revenue side, some amount of increase that we've seen over the last year. So, the budget will increase $32,000 there on the revenue side, and uptake on the expenditures of $61,000, but still, the fund continues to operate at an operating surplus. And finally, with cable, the revenue picture anticipates a $562,000 increase in cable revenues. That amount does anticipate a increase in cable rates in the fall, so there's about a 5% increase, 5% rate increase anticipated in the fall that is driving that rate increase, the revenue increase. And on the expenditure side, an increase of $329,000, which is primarily driven by increase in costs for programming fees and so forth. The bottom line of $694,000 in the cable fund does not include the debt service payment that cable continues to pay for the commercial services program that was initiated back in 2009, 10, but, which is about $400,000, which actually leads to the next, the final two slides, which just summarizes our debt service obligations for 2013, 14. So, in the general fund, we have two debt obligations. One is for the debt, the loan we received to purchase the fire apparatus back in 2011, that's just a, that's a $38,000 payment. We also have the payment for the pension obligation bonds of $1.17 million. And again, when, even though we see a decrease in some of the, and we'll see decreases in purse costs in both police and fire, which is, was a decrease there, is being offset by this debt service payment. So, it is misleading if you just look at it from the department perspective. We continue to pay the certificates of participation for the construction of the police facility, and that is paid through the funds that we received from the dissolution of redevelopment. In the wastewater fund, we have the 2002 certificates of participation of $623,000, as well as three different loans that we pay to City of South San Francisco, state revolving fund loans, for improvements to the jointly owned wastewater treatment plant. Those amount to about $1.2 million. And finally, in cable, as I mentioned earlier, the debt service payment for the acquisition of the equipment for the commercial services program of $445,000. And of note, 2013, 14 is the final year that that payment, the full amount of that payment is required. There'll be a few months in the coming, the 14, 15 year, but it is winding down, so that is just about complete. So, that concludes this evening's presentation. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay, let's say something. I'd just like to say that it's, like you said, it's been a long time to see something positive, and we, you know, it didn't sneak up on us, but I think we've been still preoccupied in trying to recover, not only financially, but also... in trying to recover, not only financially, but also tragically. And I think it's now, it's sort of good to be able to concentrate on moving forward and getting some other things that sort of been on hold. And I'm very, very encouraged and appreciate, you know, that ongoing for the last 10 years, for as long as the city manager's tenure, actually, that, you know, that we've had to really tighten the belt. And, and it's to the audience as to how, how we've made that work. And I think it's important to know that we look, we, at least I do, I watch what other cities do. And we sort of lead the, lead the pack in planning for increase, not just increases, but improvements, you know, and whether it's a water, wastewater increase or whether it's capital improvement projects and things. I can appreciate what we do and then we see how the other cities sort of fall into it or the other cities have more problems with it. And they're probably not going to come out of this, out of this recovery as, as good as we are. And I, and I'm proud to say that we, you know, we're not making up for lost time. We are well positioned and we're just going to start right into, it seems that we're going to start right into some, you know, some real positive, positive action in the next couple of years.
If I could just comment on that real quickly, I, I think your observations are exactly on target and...
Oh, thank you.
The, it's some of the, sometimes it's difficult to make comparisons to other cities. And I know that sometimes you, among your elected official colleagues, may be hearing that, you know, oh, we're having to do this or that, and you may wonder, well, you know, are we doing enough? Have we done enough? And I've looked at that from time to time and paid close attention to what I hear my colleagues talking about because we, we discuss these types of things often as well. And one of the, one of the things that I've observed is that the city has been at this, as we've said, for a very long time, for a decade and, or actually, a little bit more than a decade. And we have, I think, we started promptly, but we continued to maintain reductions. We continued to make reductions and/or to hold the line in a very aggressive way and sometimes at a level that was, it was a little tighter than, than some of our colleagues. And they're not, you know, everybody does it differently and everybody's situation is a little bit different. But I do think that the strategy that the city council has imposed and developed and maintained and guided for this very long time both demonstrates your thoughtful analysis as, as longtime policymakers with the best interests of the city of San Bruno in foremost of your minds, but also a strategy that has actually served this community very well. And I think the good results that we have in front of us are not only related to the sun rays of economic improvement, but also to the strategy that you've guided these many years. So we hope, we can't say for sure, but we hope, because we can't, none of us can predict the future that reliably. But we do see some opportunity for optimism. And I failed to mention earlier, and we just call your attention to the front cover of this budget, as we enter our centennial year, you know, we've got something really very profound to be proud about, to brag about, and hopefully, as we move forward over the next year, to celebrate.
Anyone else? Well, this is a nice review. It kind of sets the stage for what we're going to get into next week in the details. And so I appreciate this because I, I don't get into the details as much as a lot of my colleagues do. But, which is just fine, everybody does their thing a little different. But I do want to say it's an opportunity in the overview to thank all the department heads, all city staff, and all city employees, top to bottom. I like to use top to bottom, I like to say laterals, if you will, because we're all in it together. We've, we've had to, to really, you know, think about what we're doing with, with the money we have. Nobody's really been let go. We've been able to do that a lot differently than other cities in the last number of years. But even with my own business, I'm still keeping my powder dry. So I think, you know, we are a conservative council, fairly conservative. I think we want to be that way going forward. But keep in mind, and some of the older employees will remember that, when we, when we had it, we always shared it and we intend to do that going forward. At least I intend to. So it gives us the opportunity this evening in the overview of what is a very special budget when we're coming out of some very tough times to say, thank you and we appreciate it and it does not go unnoticed. So thank you very much. So if there's no other business, we're adjourned for Monday night.